Regular trustees meeting. Hopefully, no one gets overstimulated here. It should be pretty exciting. Debbie, you want to go ahead and call us to order?
Yes, Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
And Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Bev, you want to lead us in the pledge?
I am the leader of the United States of America. The majority of all the religion stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with every day in justice.
All right. Thanks, everybody for attending. Again, we're gonna. This meeting just try something a little new to try to keep things on track. Any anybody who wants to have public comment, of course, we, you know, appreciate and encourage and welcome that. But we would ask that you try to keep it like around like three minutes, five minutes ish if you can. Not that I'm gonna like, you know, stick stringently to that, to be honest with you, but just so that everybody else has a has an opportunity to comment if ever anybody else is interested in commenting. So just kind of try to keep somewhat of a format with that as we kind of move through our agenda here.
Does that apply to us as well?
It does. Please don't take the whole three to five minutes for every comment. So, okay, Debbie, we got regular meeting minute approval?
I request the motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of September fourteenth and the special meeting slash work session on October fourth and fifth.
So moved.
Seconded.
We'll call.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Thank you.
And was that the regular and special meeting?
Yeah, October, the work session.
Gotcha. All right. So we'll go ahead and we also have reoriented the agenda to have public presentation up front. So if anybody here for public presentations, you can, you know, do what you need to do and then head out if you would really like to. You can stay if you want that too. Chief Brockman.
I have nothing really to say, just probably other than we have a couple of community engagement events. We are advertising on Facebook.
And they came by the way of Dr. Campbell. So first is we're going to for any individual in the township, any family that has a child that cannot make it to trick or treating because of some ailment or disability, we are going to make a visit to the house of that family to deliver Halloween candy. It's getting wide support on Facebook right now. The other one is Chief Craig Wright and I are will be participating in a coffee with the chiefs at Big B Coffee on November fourth from eight o'clock till nine AM. And it'll be a periodic event where people can drop by and have a discussion with us if you have any issues that you'd like to bring to our attention or just like to speak with us about any, any issue that you have. Please drop by Big B Coffee on November fourth and we'll be there and we'll conduct that event periodically to reach out to the community and kind of create that one-on-one relationship. That's all I have.
Thanks, Chief. It sounds like a great idea.
Yes, both of them. Do you have a motion, Chief, regarding an appointment?
I do have a motion. Initially, it was expected that Christopher Chesney, our police candidate would be here, but he's on vacation. So if you allow me to go ahead and read the emotion, even though he won't be sworn in tonight.
Okay, sure.
I request a motion to approve the appointment effective October thirtieth, twenty twenty-two of Christopher Chesney to a full-time sworn patrol officer per requirements of the Pierce Township Police Association Collective Bargaining Agreement at a rate of thirty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents an hour, step four. Mr. Chesney fills a vacated position within the department.
Okay. The motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. So now I have a request from trustee Campbell. On Halloween.
Ever the party planner.
Seems a bit out of the box.
So the Ohio Township Association came up with the recommendation, the Clermont County Township Association, the recommendation that we have on the thirty-first, and now there's some communities that are doing on the thirtieth and maybe otherwise, but my recommend, my request, I'll make the motion to establish the date for trick or treat, not only for this year, but going forward on October the thirty-first and hours, I didn't judge down the hours. Tim, do you remember hours? Okay, so including in that that motion requesting that those hours be from six to ten PM. Six to eight PM, sorry.
Wow, you really.
That's a long trigger. That's a big party.
Sick in the morning. All right, so that that sounds good to me. So the other kind of thing, like, can we make something like so annually, it just gets held on trick or treat? Because it seems to be our always our conclusion. Doesn't it? On 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 Halloween, I mean.
Doing this resolution.
For this year.
And going forward.
It's this thing going forward?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
We won't have to do it. Unless the trustees at the time want to change it, you know, going forward.
Pete, Pete, normally I would debate this issue, but I'm retaining my three to five minutes.
Okay. You want to talk about the time?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's per topic.
Oh, it's per topic. I didn't know that. I'll save it all up till the end.
All right, I have a motion in a second.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes. All right. Halloween's on Halloween.
Imagine that.
Mr. Paul Holman. Carl Hartman. Present.
Bueller. Bueller.
Okay. Departmental updates. Chief Brockman.
Yes, sir, I already gave my.
Chief Wright.
I have a few brief things. Was notified last week that the FEMA application that Clermont County EMA Director Havercost did for the property acquisition on Old Fifty-two, the house that's repetitive flood loss has been approved. So that project will be moving forward. So that'll give the Wood family some much needed assistance to get them out of that that structure. Once the property is purchased and demolished, then it'll be returned kind of at a natural state grass. And I think the plan is to turn it over to the Clermont County Park District so that they can they'll maintain it moving forward. Um, we did just a couple of weeks ago. So you probably remember back several months ago, we got an eight thousand dollar donation from a former resident to use it where it's needed most. So we used some of that money towards the UTV project. And then we've, we've been looking at a sonar unit for the boat for for a while. We've had two instances this summer where we could have utilized that and didn't have that capability. So we use the money towards that, found a unit on sale. So we did purchase that and it's in the process of getting installed on the boat. So that'll give us a tremendous capability. Not only for locating vehicles and potentially victims under the water, but it also has some chart plotting capability. So being out on the river at night will help keep our folks a little safer to be able to navigate around. I think the other kind of exciting thing is, though it doesn't pertain directly to Pierce. So staff in the fire department have been working with a film production crew. So they're going to be filming a movie in Ohio Township as well as several other sites around Cincinnati. So we've been working with them for a few weeks. Filming will start tomorrow and run the end of this week, beginning next week, some some dates in November. So kind of exciting for the area that you're going to have a true Hollywood production film partially, you know, close to us. The only other last issue I had is we did have a, an issue last week at East Cape Mobile Home Park. Our crews were there for an unrelated incident. And while they were on scene, discovered that there was some, some raw sewage on the ground, which kind of unraveled a large chain of events. So I'm happy to report that through some collective efforts of, you know, Clermont County Public Health, Water Resources, State Department of Commerce, Commissioner's Office, Prosecutor's Office, you know, repairs were made to that collapsed sewer line Friday evening. By Monday, the raw sewage was all cleaned up and sixty-three bags of lime were put down on all of the waste that was around the property. So definitely a huge boost for those folks that live in that area that have been dealing with that for some time. And it was a completely disgusting wrong situation that I think we got through and made quality of life just a little bit better for those folks. That is all I have. Sir. I don't know. So I mean, we, we had some speculation for some residents has gone on for for a while. So Adams Clermont solid waste did come out and help us. They took some water samples to see what was kind of in the the water, running away from the property. So we're not really definitively sure on how long it's been going on, but I think probably much longer than it needed to. It was not reported, anybody know. And that's one of the challenges that we're, we're kind of continually facing. I did forget our zoning department. You know, Andrew and Eddie were engaged and partnered with us. The police department came out. So it was a huge collaborative effort, but mobile home parks have kind of fallen into no man's land in Ohio. So I mean, there was a code change where they kind of fell out of the building code aspect and it kind of falls into one of those of whose responsibility it is, who has jurisdiction. And it's been a very difficult thing for many communities to navigate. So we're no different.
So Craig, with the Ohio EPA and federal EPA, what kind of, what kind of stance are they taking on this? I mean, what, what, what kind of kind of hammer have they brought down to ensure that sewage, that people aren't existing in sewage on a
Some, to my knowledge, none. So initially, when they were contacted, you know, their, their concern was if the sewage had left the property. And and we weren't sure if it did or we didn't. So I think some of it will hinge on the water samples that were taken. If they do come back positive for E. coli, that it did leave the property, I think it might raise the EPA's eyebrows a little bit and maybe they'll get involved, but I'm not, not completely convinced it will. And I think at this point, it's been cleaned up. So I think it's kind of a non-issue for a lot of folks.
Okay, well, it just seems a little bit surprising to me that, you know, they virtue signal to be champions of the environmental, for the environment in general. And then you have waste all over the ground somewhere and they're like, oh, yeah, whatever.
And I think one of the the challenges is, you know, sewage, though, you know, and in my line of work, we consider it a biohazard, but it doesn't really fit in the the definitions of a hazardous material, which really kind of piques the interest of the EPA folks. So I think it's kind of one of those gray area things that makes it a bit more challenging.
Yeah. Not technically hazardous, just very uncomfortable and smelly.
It was, that's an understatement.
Okay. Well, thank you for your work on that, Craig. I know you went above and beyond. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're very welcome.
Okay. Service Director Kohler.
As you guys all saw, the parking lot is done. Finally, after a year and a half of waiting. But I also completed all the the road paving for twenty twenty-two and they are continuing to work on Coal Road. So as far as I know, is there's still still scheduled to to be open on the scheduled date. So that's all I got.
Thank you.
And Nordike Road is, will be closed between Hopper Hill and Nine Mile. Due to their bridge reconstruction from October thirty-first through January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. That is with Clermont County, so.
So what is it slipping into the creek?
No, the, the bridge is not compliant anymore. So they have to replace the bridge.
Yeah. Okay.
Did Nine Mile open back up? Are they done with that?
I'm sure they're supposed to be finished today.
Okay.
Replacing some corners just outside of the township.
Okay.
There's supposed to be not a lot today.
All right. Thanks, John. Parks and Green Space, do we have anybody to report on that this evening?
I don't know if Ms. Dressy would like to. We weren't meeting last week, so if you'd like to address, you know, if you all cover it, then I can talk about tennis sports.
Thanks, Doug.
Last week, yeah, the meeting minutes will be out in seven days. Some things that might came up that are a bit of a break for this group. So, you know, last year we had the inaugural Christmas tree lighting event and we'd like to do that again this summer. We were proposing Thursday, December the thirteenth on seven to eight PM. And so the trustee likes to do that.
What was that date, Doug? I'm sorry.
Thursday.
First, okay.
Seven to eight.
Thank you.
And we would have the same place, the lighting center. The odd and both things came up. My opinion, my appearance, the town, the purpose of the dream. And put that up and put the lights on it. And it all could be checked. There was a declaration, so already they got together to the county, the wife, the son, or like the chair. Okay, I'm sure she's going home or, okay, yeah, I'm not sure where they came from, what they made of it. It's a, it's a different thing with the work group in next month's part, maybe it's doing, you know, it gets community involvement. Anyway, working on that, we're on getting like a ransom certificate last year. On that, again, you know, they discussed the, 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 the projects, you know, the next It's one of the things we are planning, you know, we do two ball of your work days a year, one in the spring and one in the fall, and we have set fall on or Saturday or the nineteenth by eight AM and we'll split some time between the blowtorch or anything, or some more. Really, all I have, maybe one or anything.
So.
Thank you.
Looking forward to the Christmas tree lighting. That was fun last year. Cool that.
I suggest to be a buyer of all trees this year. I mean, I think the location we put it at will surprise them with only five or three every year.
Do you have an idea?
Can you board approval for that?
Yeah, well, I think that we don't necessarily have to have a motion because I think it's going to be below how much, what's our threshold for the administrator?
Twenty-five hundred.
You better stay underneath twenty-five hundred. Did you do that? Okay. Sheldon's probably got a few trees over there that are twenty-five hundred and up, but I don't think many.
I said to start small, we need to grow a lot here.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
So the, so the board is supportive of the bulb trees and a motion as to not exceed twenty-five hundred, but we don't need a motion. All right. Planning and zoning. Eddie.
So, so the biggest update that we have with regard to our land use plan, we have launched our public input. And so we are up to, we actually just passed five hundred and fifty responses on our survey. So that will be running until up through the weekend. There are a number of locations where you can take the survey. We've partnered with a number of businesses, Super Sams, Big Bs, and various other locations throughout the community have allowed us to post our QR code and whatnot. So you can just scan it with your phone, take the survey at your convenience. We also have it on our website, Facebook, and it's available if you come by our office. So we're really happy with the response and we're hoping to get even more. So with regard to building this, this past month, we're up to eighty-seven homes in the, in the township, five more last month. So still going fairly strong, given, you know, other greater circumstances. And with regard to code enforcement, we have a couple of items just to provide a quick update on twenty-eight, twenty-five Pond Run was a property that has had a number of issues, including an Airbnb, some heavy construction equipment and other various issues. They are scheduled to go to mediation with the prosecutor's office in about two weeks. So we're hoping to get a more firm resolution to those issues as far as, you know, it's not acceptable to operate or attempt to operate an Airbnb without a permit and those sorts of things. And and also operating heavy equipment. All these various different issues will be addressed at the, at the mediation. The nine sixty-two East Legendary construction appears to be coming along. It appears that everything is under roof. Imagine they, they have some, some various other items they're going to be taking care of, but for the most part, it looks like they're probably going to be done before winter takes hold. So that's positive. And then thirty-seven seventy-five Vineyard. If you recall, that was a property that had overgrown weeds, grass, and then there was a fence issue and that sort of thing. We're, we're looking to collect just a couple more quotes on fixing their fence, but we hope to have that done within the next couple of weeks, have the fence repaired.
So we're stepping in fixing the fence and building it, right?
That's right.
Go on, say it again.
An attorney.
Yeah, it's name escapes me right now. It's in a, it's in a trust. It's, it's called Edward Teeland.
But it's not like, it's not like a bank or something?
No, no, but it was, it was recently moved into a trust and I think it was around the same time that the that the owner who had been living in, in, in the home had moved to the West Coast. So.
Okay, has the news gotten broken to you from our work session about when we'd like the land use plan project completed?
Yeah, generally speaking, yes. We're, we're on, you know, we're on schedule and we're moving along. I was hoping to have something pretty firm to you guys. But early spring at the latest. So that was kind of what I thought was.
We'll have to have a chat about that.
Because when, when the process started, I know, I think we formally kicked it off in February. These products, this process can generally take depending on, you know, how thorough you want to get on these various different projects. I mean, it can go eighteen months, two years, that sort of thing. And so we were tracking well ahead of that to to start with. So
we have a habit of this. We know you, we didn't give you a lot to work with and that was a can that got kicked down the road longer than it should have. To be sure, but also it's kind of an important piece for a lot of other pieces that we need to get in place. So that was something that we, you know, you were not here, but we did talk about it at our work session a little bit. Early spring at the latest.
I think that, yeah, absolutely. And I think that that was generally we were, what we were tracking on before, but I'm happy, you know, if we need to tailor the process or reconfigure, we can do that. It's, you know, you guys are the captains here.
You know, it's a tall order, but you got to start somewhere.
But having said that, though, there's no reason why we can't delve in and do some work on our, our zoning code, correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, zoning code, that's entirely, absolutely. And so the important thing I think here is just being as thorough as we can with the public input. I mean, that, that, that's just going to take a good amount of time. And of course, if we did this every five years, which I know that's the plan going forward, I mean, that's a healthy way to do it. That's one thing, but we're, you know, we're tracking back to twenty thirteen and saying, okay, here's where we've come and and kind of catching everything up to speed. But of course, there are other projects that as feedback comes back in, it's, it's really clear, like, hey, these are low hanging fruit. We can knock them off and get, and get moving. And of course, the plan is from day to day can change here, right? You know, we, we knock a few things off the, the implementation schedule. Next thing you know, it we're, you know, we're due for an update theoretically. And I mean, I think getting a really strong baseline on this is critical. And I think that we're getting there and I think you'll, you'll also be very, very, very satisfied with the product that you're going to get here.
Well, I mean, I, I do like the idea of a heavy dose of public involvement. I mean, I think that, that helps with the buy-in. And I do, I really like what you've done with working with the businesses and the around the corridor to tie them into it, get some, get some buy-in from them as well. But I mean, as far as the timeline goes, let's not go too deep into the spring. Okay?
That's reasonable.
Eddie, before we go on to the next topic, I was asked by a resident of Pond Run to bring up a couple of points on the Pond Run property that's in question. And I'm glad to hear that it's going to mediation. So this is specific to a couple of episodes of shooting, at least four to five. The one, a couple of them were particularly prolonged. One was on Tuesday evening, October the fourth from eleven fifteen PM to twelve twenty-three AM. I think all of us would probably agree that that's an inappropriate length of time for that kind of shooting to go on, and it's an inappropriate time of the day. Saturday morning, October the first, seven fifty-eight, I'll give this to you so you can have it for the record. Saturday morning, October the first, at seven fifty-eight AM, when most people are still asleep. Sunday morning, October the second, eight fifteen AM. And then on Tuesday morning, October the eleventh, at seven eleven AM. And so I think some of these times are clearly inappropriate. You know, we understand that there's a right there for the individual to do some shooting on his property. But my, in my estimation, some of these are entirely inappropriate and unquestionably so. So I'll give you this. So you can have it for the record and that may be passed on during mediation, perhaps. If there, if the individual who shared this with me would like to discuss it further, I guess this would just be the time.
Can we, can we include that into the minutes as well? Yeah. Where we can have a, a public record carried forward for our legal friends.
To your provided Debbie and she's.
Yeah, okay.
Additionally, I would recommend that if this starts to happen, I mean, when you hear the gunshots, this is not necessarily a zoning issue. This is actually a legal issue. And and please, by all means, call nine one one, particularly some of those hours are just absolutely ridiculous. So, you know, I, I would certainly call and get, you know, our, our police department out there as quickly as possible. That'd just be my recommendation. That'd just be my recommendation. Again, I don't think it's a zoning issue as much as, as a legal issue.
So we do have a noise ordinance in the township and uh, that noise ordinance is a little vague as far as the decibel of noise. There's not a specification. But it essentially loosely defines, you know, something that disrupts somebody else, right? That's something that, that, your rights end where somebody else's begin, right? And something that's, you know, disruptive and clearly, you know, eleven or ten PM to twelve, you know, twenty AM is. Would fall under that. So if you, if you call the police line and our guys respond. We have some obligation to hold that ordinance as a township, correct?
Correct. See, I live, I live just on the other side of the hill from you guys on Pond Run. I live on seven forty nine. So starting about October the first. Um, it's not uncommon to hear gunfire through the valley, starting about ten o'clock on because, well, you've got hunting season starting. So that's not unusual. But again, where kind of the. The rubber meets the road is when it's an awkward time or it's disruptive time or, or, you know. Twelve in the morning is, is certainly not an appropriate time.
So I think for some of you folks that, you know. Are wondering, well, what, what are the rules and where are the, where is the line and who's crossed that type of thing? Of course, you know, if it's disruptive to you. And it's in an off hour, then clearly you should call our police department and we'll, we'll come out and deal with it in accordance with the ordinance.
Correct. Yeah, we'd be happy to uh, investigate any uh, call that you make. Um, and if. You're not happy with the, the service, if you do call, uh, please get ahold of me and I'll personally look into it.
So contrary to that, if it's during the day and he's shooting at a target in his yard at three in the afternoon. Probably not a whole lot we're going to do. I mean, there is a right to bear arms, his second amendment. If he's shooting at, you know, midnight. It's a different story. It's disrupting people.
If you shoot down a solid.
And that is always, that is always.
That would absolutely be a.
That sign has been replaced. Somebody replaced it thankfully, but it was nearly destroyed by that shooting.
And of course you can't shoot across the roadway either. So if we have evidence that we're, we'll uh, certainly cite the uh, individual. While we're on that. Uh, I think we were all given this, this letter. Um, this is a letter from the residents uh, from Pond Run area. Talking about two projects, one um, the, the Airbnb as well as the. Agribusiness. I'd like to also include this in our minutes. So that that's logged in the minutes for the rest.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman.
All right. Eddie, anything else?
I do have something more for you, Eddie. This is still within my three to five. Uh, to the premier folks, uh, the, the receivers, they received a letter from the prosecutor's office. Could you circle back with um, with Will Garing? And talk to him about what that's all about so that he has a better understanding. Of, of why and what, what's expected.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Eddie. All right, uh, administration, Tim?
Uh, Chairman, the main thing I had tonight was a follow-up to conversations we've had the last couple of meetings regarding uh, the tennis courts um, over. Um, next door here, Pierce Park. Um, when we signed the contract with uh, Logan Creek uh, to do the upgrades to grow park as well as our park over here. Uh, when, when we were walking over um, with them, um, before we were going to start and on the scope of the project, we looked at with Mr. Kohler, I looked at the tennis court and. Um, the cracks that were on that tennis court that were fixed two or three years ago, I think, John, something along that line. Um, they had already opened up fairly significantly and um, it sort of started us down the path of um, considering the courts were built. Probably in the nineties as to how much lifespan they have left in them. So. We went and talked with uh, the engineers that had prepared the, the scope of work for the, the, uh, the parks, the projects that we're doing. And um, they came back with us some, some uh, cost estimates that were seemed high. Um, and we discussed those in, in, in this board meeting a couple of months ago. Um, and uh, some potential suggestions. Uh, the prices went from roughly sixteen thousand, a hundred and forty six thousand. Um, from a uh, patch to a full tear out and replacement. Um, fortunately at that meeting, um, one of our residents in Pierce Township, Mr. Lukens, uh, who knows a lot about tennis and is a, is a, is a real fan of that. Uh, he had been working with Legendary Run on their tennis courts and getting a rehab for those. And he suggested to us that we contact the company that Legendary Run had worked with. Um, which I did. Uh, I talked to the, first the HOA for Legendary Run and they were highly recommendative. Of uh, this particular uh, company, um, Schubert Tennis, um, to come out and take a look. So we called them and they came out and looked at the tennis courts. Um, they felt like that uh, we have probably about ten or twelve years left of the courts before we will have to replace them based on their age. Um, but it's certainly a less costly option for right now, considering the other things that we've talked about on our goal setting session. Um, so uh, what I've uh, put together for is a memo to uh, the board is. Uh, an option to where we could go in and fix the, the cracks with a, a really, really heavy duty crack sealer. Uh, we would also reco- coat the, the courts that are there. We would fix the nets. Um, there are several things involved. Um, in that quote, uh, but that could range anywhere from fourteen thousand um, as a minimum up to about twenty eight thousand. And if we did everything that was recommended by Mr. Schubert. Um, so there's obviously a menu of items for us uh, to do that. It's a little late in the year now, probably for them to come out and do coatings and things along that line. Um, so if you wanted to at this point, um, authorize us to uh, work with the, the quote with Mr. Schubert. We could certainly get that in motion, but it'd likely be in the spring before he'd actually do the work. Um, or conversely, if you wanted more quotes, staff is happy to go out and get those as well.
I think those are much more, that's a much more reasonable approach. I think probably waiting till spring is a good idea. Not much we can do this, this late in the year.
The, the only thing I would say though is if we do want to work with Mr. Schubert, this may be a good timing to get on his schedule. So. If we did have um, a contract with him, then obviously uh, hopefully we would get that sooner in the spring rather than, you know, in August. Um, he did say he's pretty busy. Also noted that because inflation, as we all know, is running rampant right now, that uh, if we could lock down the price earlier. Um, it might be better for us than have to revisit it um, in, in April, but certainly we can go on either route.
Keep raising the interest rates, I'll revisit in April. Um, so what's the price again?
Uh, the, the uh, for, for the minimum price, it's roughly um. Fourteen thousand dollars. Um, and that's for pressure wash, some crack repair and resurfacing. That's not really a lot more than what we did a few years ago. He highly recommends the installation of advanced crack repair system. Um, apparently that's a thing. Um, but he said that he felt like that would give us that additional period of time. Say seven to ten years where we really aren't having to battle those cracks. Um, there are a few other things that um, as I mentioned in my memo, we can um, fix the low points, which he calls bird bass. Um, if we want to, um, that's where water, we get little dips in the cord. He can fix those. That's about three thousand dollars. Um, he, there's a, a coating that you can put on underneath the final coat that helps uh, with the imperfections and the waves um, on the, on the asphalt. Under lying at asphalt. Uh, he did um, give us a quote of seventeen hundred dollars to have uh, four pickleball courts striped. Um, which it seems uh, Mr. Dressy, I think that that's something that uh, the parks committee would really like to see us try to move forward with and. And that's a fairly low cost.
You know. Everyone is worried about. Uh, you know, this looking brought this up before in working, you know, with the, with your works over there, uh, English sites, the way it's taught. And you still maintain the. The ability to play tennis while, but you also have the opportunity. To get a horrible mess to add four of us instead of. What's there now is just a tennis courts and then this lines for one people. So you basically acknowledge your capable capacity. Um, by moving with the stuff. Yeah. But very much. So that, that is what they proposed and then like parts towards that and that's obviously in the first year, he also.
Did you, John, did you think, what was your opinion on this?
Uh, the crack system, I mean. I, it seemed legit. I mean, I think it would work well. Uh. It's definitely a better price than the hundred and something thousand. Of the other crack repair, which is terribly put that out and put it back. Uh, and it's certainly better practice than the one we used last time. I don't, I like it.
So um, we're looking at, by comparison, like a hundred some and then. You know, the, the crack filling is, is fourteen, three. Seventeen hundred for the striping, three grand to fill in the, the depression so that it doesn't hold water in certain areas. So like eighteen thousand? Yeah, so. Eighteen, nineteen thousand for this?
Well, the, the, the total price, um, again, if you fix the low points, we do the crack repair system. Um, we do the, the, the basic price on that. Um, you're running in the range of about twenty five thousand, about twenty five thousand dollars. But uh, again, comparatively speaking to the four options that Kleinger gave us, um, it seems very reasonable to get another eight. I will say eight to ten years. He said ten to twelve, but I think eight to ten. No, no, the, the nets would have to be purchased separately as a, as, as a material item, materials supplies.
So Tim, eighteen, I, I think I got your memo, but I misplaced it. I was trying to find it on my phone, couldn't find it. So eighteen. Um, plus, plus, what was that additional, that difference seventeen?
Yeah, so, so um, again, um, fourteen thousand for the, the base costs to come in, which again is fairly similar to what was done a few years ago. Um, another six thousand to do this advanced crack repair system.
Okay.
Um, which I think John and I would recommend, or we're going to be back where we were in two or three years and. Um, I'm not sure that's, that's good money going after bad. Um, it's three thousand dollars to do the fix, what he's calls the bird bass or the low, low points in there. Um, there's also a quote for forty five hundred dollars um, to do a black resurfacer before you do the final. And that helps with the wavy parts on the tennis court. I'm not sure that's critical because this is not a, you know, it's not a championship court. Um, so it's an option, but I'm not sure it's critical. Um, I think Legendary Runs Courts did that. Um, but again, it's six thousand dollars. I'm sorry, forty five hundred dollars. Um, seventeen hundred dollars for the pickleball lines, uh, which we would recommend. And then there's a six hundred dollar um, estimate to fix the fence post and the, 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 the nets post are starting to lean. Um, and I guess, John, the concrete um, footers on those have kind of thrust up over a period of time, just heaved up over time.
All right, what do you guys think?
So I think it sounds good. Twenty five thousand for all of that. It's a good. Decent price. That come a lot better than what we were given earlier. So I would support it.
I don't know that it was though. Uh, twenty five thousand dollars. I mean, our lowest end, and I, I don't, I wish I had the comparison between what Kleinger's gave us. I mean, the low end on Kleinger's was like sixteen thousand and I'd like to know what the. Difference is. If I'm right, that might not be.
Yeah, the um, the, the option four was roughly sixteen thousand dollars and they had a twenty percent contingency if you're. Call, we were questioning, but according to Mr. Schubert with prices, he says they're changing monthly, it seems like at this point. Um, but uh, that was for an overlay of existing, existing courts um, with a paving grid was what Kleinger's had recommended as a low end option on that. But some of the, the extra items that um, he had suggested, Mr. Schubert and Schubert Tennis is not in this, not, not in the Kleinger um, a quote. Like fixing the low spots with the, the bird bass and fixing the posts on the tennis court and straightening those up.
So if we were to go to somebody like Mr. Schubert, um, that is outside of Kleinger's. The only advantage I would see with Kleinger's, if we were to operate within Kleinger's, is we do repeat business with Kleinger's. So Kleinger's is less likely, pardon my French, to screw us over. Cause they're going to have to do business with us again. Whereas this guy, you know, you say it lasts ten years, whatever you're going to say at last. Well, you know, what are you signing off on a guarantee on that? Probably not. You know, the substrate is what it is.
Well, what comment on that, on that would be, why would they say their estimate or did they actually add close from contract?
No, we, they, those were estimates. And then I went back after our last meeting and asked them if they could get actual pricing from projects that they had done themselves as an engineer. Um, and uh, so we did get a few of those, but really only two within the last year and a half.
I'm not so much thinking like direct cost, Doug. I'm just thinking off the cuff. So we got twenty five K here and we got sixteen K over here initially from Kleinger's. Now they go back to the drawing board, Kleinger's does. And they actually total that up. And of course, it's been a while and it amounts to more than sixteen. But maybe it amounts to twenty five even. Apples to apples or perhaps less. I don't know.
So um. So we're not actually going to start the project until spring, right? We would not be able to. It's too late in the season to be doing the coding and so forth. So that said, we don't necessarily have to make a decision tonight. No. So it would give me an opportunity to go back and figure out what. Kleinger's had inside their. Bid or their, their prices. So we can see if we're looking at apples to apples. If there's a lot more, it's a better deal. With this, this other, this other gentleman, then let's do that. But we've got a little bit of time. We don't need to rush into something and we don't need to spend. You know, uh, a, a larger amount of money because I, you know, it's going to happen. We're going to sign a contract in October. And then by March, April, May, oh, well, you know, those prices went up tenfold between now and then. We've got another issue like that coming up on the, on the agenda soon. So. Let's, let's just work through this and I, I would recommend that we table it for the moment. Um, no one's fallen into a sinkhole yet on that court. Is anybody likely to? All right, let's put it, I, I would, I would prefer to put a pin in it so we can compare those two and just see that we're getting apples to apples.
So the Schubert Company, I just did a little bit of research online. I mean, it looks like they've done projects. Pretty much statewide and this is their, this is what they do. So, and they've been around since nineteen and eighty four. So um, I, I'm pretty confident that they're probably, if they, if we do choose to work with them, they'll probably do a. Pretty good job for what we're looking to do.
I have no doubt. I think they, I think they're a fine company. I mean, the, the, the evidence is that they did the work over at Legendary Run and those courts, those courts look great.
But the reason I contacted uh, the HOA for Legendary Run Town Properties is, is you know, they manage lots of facilities all over. Um, this area and so they've contracted with Schubert many times over the years and um, they have very, they had very good things to say about the company and the work that they did and. That they had stood behind it when there were issues that came up. So that's why I wanted to get it from somebody that worked with them for a long time on a lot of different projects.
Yeah, I have no doubt that they do quality work. I'm just, I would just like to sit down and look at the numbers for a couple more minutes and, and kind of work through that part. Before we commit to twenty five thousand. End up. If that's okay.
Yeah, my only point was, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with the familiar way. It's like a kind of a small business here in Pierce to an extent. We've done a lot of business with Kleinger's.
Yeah.
They've done a good job on a lot of stuff, so. But I would uh, suggest possibly making sure they had a crack at it as far as.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So we're going to table that?
Kind of a motion to table or just?
Well, since it's been on for three meetings, it might be good just to table it and, and then we'll come back at once.
We need an official motion for that?
I think it'd be helpful just to motion the table, you know?
All right, so I, I, I would uh, request a motion uh, to table with the caveat of directing staff. To uh, collect uh, another bid from Kleinger's for a similar scope of work as was proposed by. Same with the company?
Schubert.
Schubert?
Schubert.
Does that sound reasonable?
Perfect. So moved.
Mm-hmm, second.
All right. We done with administration? Is that over a lot in, in administration limbo here?
I did. Pete second.
Did we do real call? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Roll call them.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I wasn't going to let him go.
Okay, we had some folks waiting to see what happened with the tennis court, I think. They all headed out.
No, I think they were pond run.
Pond run, okay. All right, um. So are we done with administration?
Yes.
Tim, good. So uh, old business, we have uh, green road traffic concerns. Uh, Tim, you?
The only thing we had is I did forward to you um, the uh, the analysis of uh, the traffic that was done by Kleinger's. Um, and uh, And you have that in your email box, but it it seemed like that the speeds were pretty much within the range of the speed limit. I know Chief Brockstrom looked at it as well, and it had traffic counts on there as well. So we did get that information for your roles, you know, with the other things we've done, just to kind of build information on it. But I don't have anything further than that, unless you do, chief.
Okay. Do we have anybody from Green Road crew that would like to come up and speak this evening?
Hi, I'm Amy Mitchell and I'm going to be Randy, Randy. My only question was, so you did give the results out of the of the traffic study?
Yeah.
And excuse me, like giving credit, but maybe it feels that way when I'm walking on the road. And I guess my question is, it's all how many more steps is when we know if something's going to be done or not? It's not going to be taken as fast today or updating in your mind.
Well, here's here's where here's what we're trying to do. So, you know, whenever you do in a transportation study and Commissioner Painter can can vouch for this, you you always have to go through a checklist of, you know, what can be done, what, you know, it's kind of the 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 pie in the sky option and what is the actual practical. So we've spent a lot of time digging around your neighborhood. You've probably seen the police more than you've probably ever seen them on your street. I know that that Craig has been in the in the neighborhood, timing runs. I know that, you know, Jim, it was over there as well. Timing runs from here to to the subdivision behind you guys, just try to see what would happen if we shut down roads. So if we decided that Green Road could be taken away from, you know, the rest of the community. So we looked at all of those pieces already and we've tried to peel that back and figure out what's wrong. The one thing I did notice on the traffic counts is they're unusually high for a street that size with the subdivision behind it, the size that it is. And part of that problem is is that there was a design flaw when the subdivision was built. I guess at one point, Green Road went all the way through to Nordike. And then it was pulled back away from Nordike. As you leave the subdivision, and really it was kind of a fluke that we found this, Craig was doing doing runs to try to time it. And as he pulled out, he realized that he couldn't turn left out of out of the subdivision behind you. That means that all of that traffic's being pushed up onto your road. The people who can't turn left are now moving the other direction and coming right down your street. So that's something that we have to work through. You know, the the one thing that I've told other people and I and I'll have to tell you guys too, is that, you know, when you've got a road that's broken, you know, there's a crack in the middle of it, it's falling down a hill, you name it. You know, if it's a broken road, I can fix it. But what we have to do is change people's behavior. And that is ten times harder, if not impossible. If I could change people's behavior, we wouldn't have any drug addiction. We wouldn't have abuse. We could solve a lot of problems, but I can't solve that piece. So that's something that we're we're going to have to sort through. And it's 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 one of those processes that just sucks. I mean, we have to just pick through it and do the best we can. When we did meet with the engineer's office, the engineer's office recommended a couple of things that we can do. And I think pretty soon we're going to have those on the agenda. Or at least we're going to discuss them in November. Yeah, I think that it would be just for your discussion purposes at that point. But yeah, we did get a quote on one of the suggestions that may may work. So and 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 even among those suggestions, you have pieces that we have to sort through as well, like, for instance, speed humps. You know, we've talked about speed humps. I know that 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 Randy has won at speed humps, but they come with their own problems. So if you put in a speed hump, there's a study I'm trying to get my hands on that says that for each speed hump, you slow a fire truck down by twenty to thirty seconds. And the length of your street, we would have to put in probably three or four speed humps to make it effective. That said, that loses a minute or two on their response time. So that's another reason why we wanted to go see if we could get to the subdivision behind you via Nordike and get there faster. But we found that it took longer. So, you know, we have to be worried about that piece of the puzzle, too. So I hope you don't, I hope, I don't want this to sound like we're making excuses. We're trying to find the solution. But we just have to pick through this pile and figure out what what we can do. The other thing that some people have recommended are rumble strips. Well, that's going to sound like hell in your living room when you're watching television at night. So you've just got, you know, again, we're trying to figure those out and we're we're picking through them. And I'm glad that you guys come each month to to hear more about it. And we'll keep this on the agenda as we go through it so it doesn't get lost. Well, that's something we still have to sort through. It did, it does show some promise, but it also shows some other promise where else, not not promise, but some issues with snowplows. So when you hit them with a snowplow, sometimes they tear. And then you've underneath it, you've got spikes that are sticking up for your tires. So those are kind of the, again, there's always a plus and a minus every time we try to play with something. And I don't think we want to put green all the way back through to the to Nordike. I don't think that's an idea. But we have also been trying to reach out to the Hamilton County engineer. Because as you know, the subdivision behind you is partially in Hamilton County. So we're trying to reach out to them and talk, talk to those guys about can, is there a possibility that we can maybe remove the left turn, you know, the the no left turn sign? And see if we can get, you know, some of that traffic to just flow naturally back out on Nordike. So we're we're trying very hard to come up with a solution. So.
So. For me, it's just personally, and I know you don't want to hear this. But we need to look at this like from a whole, from a comprehensive township type perspective as to, you know, how does this relate to other roads that might be similar? And other folks that might have similar problems. And then what what kind of action do we take on in this particular situation? And how, what kind of precedent does that set for other areas too? And, you know, the township is just as a whole, never really, you know, come up with a plan for that, one less. So we you guys are kind of contributing to the greater good in an extent because we are looking in to other areas that might have similar type of situation to see, you know, what could be done there, what kind of people are unhappy with with cut through traffic, with speeding, with stuff in neighborhoods, that kind of thing. And then I kind of what what what's going to be our comprehensive approach as far as what's acceptable, it's not acceptable and kind of what what do we want to do? Because we could just be knee jerk and just throw in, for instance, speed humps in your neighborhood and it slows fire trucks down and it pisses people off because they don't want to drive over them and everything else. And now we've got a bigger problem on our hands. Where whereas we're kind of looking at, we're we're trying to look at everything as a whole to see what areas have that need as well and and make sure that we're being prudent as far as how do we approach it. So we we are digging in like, and I'm in constant discussions weekly. I drove it the other day. I saw a lady walking her dog just to see, and I stopped and I talked to her. And she said it was, it was bad. It seems to be getting worse. She walks her dog in the morning and the evening, she told me. And she said the morning is fine, but the evening is not so much. And she said that traffic backs up on one twenty five. And so it creates this huge backup if you're moving east. And you, once you get past eight mile, you see that traffic is all jammed. And then you think, I'll cut down Nordike and I'll shoot across green, right? And back up nine mile. And by the time I get up there on the other end, I'm good to go. And so I I do think that the increased population in the east and just general trends are also contributing the fact that you're getting more cut through traffic.
People learn about that cut through really quickly when they're in the mouth here and then, you know, it's used a lot. So it sounds like what you're seeing is that maybe I remember maybe there might be some discussion about.
Yeah. Yeah, and it will also have the actual, the report so that we'll we'll walk through that as well. So there'll be some discussion on some detail. And I think that she's absolutely right about the evenings. Because when you look at those numbers, they just go through the roof at and early evening hours.
You could hire Kleinger's, you could just go talk to somebody walking their dog.
Well, yeah, that's true. That's true. It's cheaper to get to go ask a dog.
Yeah, that's true.
But in in this case, it's also gave us a sense of how how fast people are going. And so that's that's also an important piece to that, too. But the thing is, is that you have a large traffic going through a road that's not built for that volume. And we're going to have, we're just going to have more of that. And we have a lot of that already. We're just going to have more of that. So you're kind of our test case.
Yeah, sorry. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Williams, will that report, that traffic report, will that be made public record as of this meeting? Is that available?
We certainly can. I don't know if I have Mr., I may have Mr. Nice's email. I can certainly send it to him. But if this lady would like to give it to me, I could go over there and get it and send it to her since she's going to be representing the group now. I mean, and and get that to her ASAP.
Okay. All right.
Hello.
Hi, hello.
Uh, what was the where it'd be possible?
That's an interesting question.
Yeah, we could look into that. Sure.
Yeah, we could take a look.
We could look into it. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, 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 absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, we could look into it. That's a good suggestion.
I'm a resident of the eight years. And my wife and I are really learning how to play. And I don't want to be about this living room situation. And I then I will not at all. But anyway, there is this one of its people that don't care. There's a line bill about twenty five, you know, this green road. And you take the life in there and and you go to the mailbox. Sanctions, children can't buy bicycles. They can't play, they're worn continually. You know, thank God I didn't get raised short on the street. But I sympathize with everybody who wants to be children. And the children, but they are threatened that they're fighting the teenager. And that is the worst. And I'm all on sanctions. Now, I can I I don't know who says, obviously. And I I I'm timorous when I go to that mailbox because of that line. And some don't care. I I usually yell out a comment in the speeding. And I've been threatened off the spot.
Did you win? But did you win? When when you got threatened? No. You didn't throw down.
You may be able to whip me, but I'm going to fish you.
I have no doubt.
Are you sure he wasn't saying have a nice night?
But it gets back to what I said. I mean, I mean, like I said, if you're asking me to fix a broken road, I can fix a broken road. I have a tough time fixing people's personal behavior. And so that's something that we have to, you know, we're trying to find that solution. But I don't know with with all the growth that's happened here and around us. I don't know that we'll ever get back to a place where kids can play in the street safely.
Yeah, we're we're.
Yeah. Well, and that's like I said, that's like I said, when 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 you've got that no left turn out onto Nordike, that really bollocks things up because now you're shoving traffic from the subdivision up onto Green Road. And so that's that's the piece that really was fouled up back in whenever, you know, the subdivision was put in, the planning was terrible that allowed that to happen.
Oh, no problem. Things that happen on Green Road.
Oh, yeah, I imagine.
And he's going and speeding with it.
Oh, I know. But again, it gets back to what I said. That's personal behavior. That's an idiot. I can't fix that. Yeah. And I I live on ten mile road. I live on seven forty nine. So so I know what it's like to have, you know, people that are crazy. We have people that go off the, you know, I live at a at a particular bend on seven forty nine and he's timing me. That 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 just throws people off the road. So it's nothing for me to be down there, you know, two in the morning, trying to fish somebody out of a tree, waiting for, you know, the police or the fire to come. They actually, do you still have that copy of that tape of my wife calling it in one time? So I I I sympathize is is what I'm trying to say. And we're trying to find a solution. Unfortunately.
Yeah, it just was raised that way.
Yeah, me too. Yeah. And or before you have to get into a fistfight with somebody.
Yeah, I I still think he may have been wishing you a nice night.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
All right. See, I'm going to put in my two cents real fast. My road is not any better. I live on an, I have a dead end road, country club drive. My wife can't walk our kids on the street because she's had to get off the street with her stroller. She's had to push it up off the road because people are flying up and down. These are neighbors. This isn't a cut through. You know, I can't teach, I I I told, she was going to teach our kids to ride bikes, my son. I said, I don't think it's a good idea to go up to the school parking lot because I don't want it because the street isn't necessarily safe. These, some of these are macro problems. Some of these are big problems, societal issues, some of them, not all of them. That's kind of where we need to collect the data for this road. But some of it is, you know, larger trends that none of us really like. So I think parsing that out away from kind of what specific issue we're having on Green Road is important.
Again, if I can engineer a solution, then that's great. Yeah, but I I cannot change your neighbors being idiots.
Right. People are idiots, some of them, myself included. All right. New business. Consent agenda. Debbie.
I request a motion for approval of payment of the payroll for the month of September in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand two thirty five thirty three.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Debbie.
I request a motion for approval of the payment of the bills for the month of September in the amount of three hundred and sixty five.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, Administrator Williams.
Mr. Chairman, if the it would be the will of the board, you certainly could group these together into one motion and and second in the vote, as I've been told by Ms. Barbary. Barbier, I'm sorry. And and but and then pull out those that you'd had concerns about or want to discuss. But that's why we had tried to group those, but certainly be happy to go through those individually if you'd like as well.
Lump them and let's go.
What what is, what are the ones you're lumping?
All those that are under the consent agenda would be items that are lumped together for one motion in a second. And if there's items you want to pull out, then you would just, you know, say I want number five to, so we have more discussion. We remove that to be item B underneath that.
Just real quick, just so we know, from a legal perspective, if there's anything that's an expenditure, can we lump it or do we have to approve it individually?
My recommendation would probably be to not lump it, but approve it.
Yeah, let's go one at a time.
Okay, okay. And I'll get further clarification clarification from Katie on that. But I know I did have a look at it to see how we could pull those together.
I like the idea of of consent agendas because it moves faster, but I don't want to do something that's going to end up causing heartburn legally later.
Or if there if there's a threshold for the expense, you know, where you can lump certain small expenses together, I I'm asking, I guess.
I don't see anything in here that would fall.
Not today, right? Not for today's agenda, but.
But again, I'll get a more formal opinion from her so that we, you're correct, and it's Freeman, that we make sure it'll be hard going against state statute.
But let's do that.
So, but 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 hold on, let me be clear. We're approving each one of these. That was our one to eight, right?
Like we normally would.
But what was your, what was our original plan? Just consent agenda, this entire, all eight things? I don't.
Yeah, so you will find. you will find in some government agencies, just to expedite some of the process of the meeting, that if there's items where it's not controversial, or there's nothing significant in those particular motions. For instance, to extend vacation, eight hours of vacation for an employee or something along that line, that those items could be lumped together, and then there could be one motion and in a vote to get all those done at the same time. I did have a look at that and she sent me an email, said we could do that. But I think we need a more formal legal opinion on that, just to make sure that we're not.
Well, I'm glad we're hashing this all out this evening. Maybe we we let's do each one individually, but coming up, I think we should bracket off certain ones that are like items that are really like petty, like really small. But I don't, I don't want to like lump the entire agenda into this one consent approval.
Right, and you know what I mean? Generally speaking, the organizations that I've been in that have had consent agendas that you could just wave through are items like a a report from a communications, you know, committee. But they met earlier in the day, and so they're on the, they're on the record, right? Their minutes to their meeting. So it's things like that that can go through, but I I would never try to take a thirty eight thousand eight hundred and forty five dollar expenditure through a consent agenda, because I think we just get blasted. And I think that would be an appropriate blasting. If it's something that's twenty five hundred dollars or less, well, that's okay, but we could lump those in there into a, into a consent agenda, but I I just would feel more comfortable for me and for our audits to have a paper trail.
So I agree, since we've more or less hashed all this out already, can we just set a precedent moving forward as to what we want to do as a board?
Yeah.
I guess once we get an opinion too, as far as like the smaller expenses, as you suggested, less than a certain amount, like twenty eight hundred bucks for vinyl wrap, you know, maybe something small like that could be something we do kind of lump into a like it's consent agenda, if you will. But the larger expenses, maybe we do parse those out.
Okay, I think we're all fairly much in agreement. So you kind of know where we want to head.
Absolutely.
Okay. Moving on.
Yeah, he's got some motions.
Yes, I'd like to request a motion for resolution twenty twenty two dash oh four six, a resolution declaring certain township properties in the police and fire departments a surplus and authorizing staff to place such items up for public auction at our disposal is set out in O R C five oh five dot one zero.
So Craig, what kind of fun stuff is going to be on on sale?
For us, it's two two thousand and seven Dodge Durango's that are well worn and have overstayed their welcome.
Well seasoned.
Yes, one, the transmission's out in. So you can go pretty slow, but not very well. The other one, the fuel tank is leaking and the fuel pump's bad, so it's going to be like twelve hundred or so to fix it. I don't think it's worth it. And then we have some other, some broken hydrant pumps and some old M D C computers that the hard drives are shot on and so some things that we may get a little bit out of an auction for parts, but nothing that would really excite you.
So I didn't think you were going to ask the chief, police chief, to identify all forty items on his list, right? Because there are about forty items on.
Are there any cool things that we can, that we can pick up?
Let's move the complete opposite of consent agenda and just go through all. Everybody saddle up because you're gonna be here a while.
I'm just trying to see if I should, little stuff I can buy.
Now, there's some outdated technology.
I make the motion that we're.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt you.
About a second?
Yeah, but I was going to take a little while to get there. I'll second.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Tim, is that all?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Chief Broxman?
I request a motion to purchase a new police vehicle from Lebanon Ford in the amount of thirty eight thousand eight forty five to replace unit twelve, which will be declared surplus. An explanation for the purchase and reassignment of vehicles is included in your agenda pack.
So moved.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Yes.
Chief Broxman?
I request a motion to pay an invoice of twenty eight hundred dollars to Cincy vinyl wraps for wrapping a new crime scene trailer with the Pierce Pierce Police Department logo. Funds for the trailer will be paid from a grant provided by the Ameri- Amelia American Legion bicentennial unit seven seven three.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Pete, me, I did.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I had to get there before.
Chief Broxman?
I request a motion to purchase equipment from Home Depot to supply the new crime scene trailer. The cost of equipment not to exceed thirty two hundred dollars. Yes, the estimated amount was initially approved by the trustees at the June eighth trustee meeting. Since then, the America, the Amelia American Legion Bicentennial Unit seven seven three donated money to the Pierce Township Police Department to purchase and outfit the crime scene trailer.
All right, so to be, to be real quick with how we're going to move forward, these two things could have been lumped together. It could have been like, I request a motion to finish off the trailer. We already talked about this, guys, you know, so moved, right? Don't you think these two things could have been?
Pretty small expenditures. I would agree so.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna try to improve and expedite things moving forward.
That would certainly yield to the wisdom of our legal counsel. However, I feel that anytime you do an expenditure, you need to vote for it. Unless it's below the twenty five hundred threshold that the administrator and department heads are permitted.
Well, that's all we're doing anyway. So I guess my point is, what's the point of even attempting a consent agenda? If that's what we're gonna do, there is no consent agenda, right? We just keep doing things the way we've been doing it.
I mean, that, I don't, I don't know the conversation that Tim might have had. Katie, Katie's obviously doing this for a very long time, so then solicitor for numerous of the townships. I believe my own recommendation would be to do it individually. But as I said, there might be something in there that you can do, lump something like we were talking about, twenty five hundred dollars together. But from my perspective for today would be I would do each one individually. Just because I'm not aware of anything that will allow it to lump them together.
Well, I mean, just to be clear, I'd like to hear what Katie's report is.
Yeah.
And we don't have it at the moment, and so I'd rather not rush into it until I see that. So that's, as I said. Well, we would have to agree between the three of us that we agree that all three of them work. Then I call it out as an individual line item. As a consent agenda, you would have the ability to call out each item.
Yeah, that that's okay to, but to play devil's advocate a little bit, like, you know, what do I need to approve a box of Kleenex? Do you want to buy a box of Kleenexes? Like, I mean, there is a minute level of detail that I do not need to be involved in, and Chief Broxman is recommending that he wants it wrapped in vinyl. And he wants the other thing that we've already approved included in that. We could ask for those things together and be done with it and move on. I'm just, I I'm I'm not necessarily arguing so much for that as strong as I seem to be, but I'm just playing devil's advocate a little bit too, and just saying that was the impetus behind why we kind of started to think down this path. And if we're not going to go down that path, as a board, I'm okay with that. I just want to know where we stand and what our plan is.
I'm not saying that we're not going down that path. I'm saying I want to hear from the lawyer first.
How does Canada do it, Commissioner Viner?
You consented. routinely stable item, items that are similar business. So it can be lumped together, one particular agenda item in either the consent agenda. Not really monetary value based on that. It is actually whether they are life. And they are routine business, routine business and or reverse. Like for instance, this one, I think we have everything consent agenda except nine. I have to vote on specifically. Routine of using things like subcom here, I just are voted on. But keep in mind that in consent agenda, any one person or can ask at the beginning. Are there, is there anyone who wants to move any consent agenda item all of the consent agenda? And immediately that has to be removed. There is no vote on. There's no decision. It comes off separately. So that's, that's really the basic. That's how, I think consent agenda started up two thousand.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
So, well, I would say the larger your organization gets, generally speaking, the less feasible it is, the more essential it might be to move to some variation of some iteration of a consent agenda, but we can explore that more with Katie. All right. Broxman didn't even get his thirty two hundred.
I'm sorry, so moved.
Seconded.
All right. Roll call?
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Service Director Kohler.
I request a motion to approve a purchase order to a purchase order to Bobcat Enterprises Incorporated for the purchase of a T seventy six T four compact track loader, not truck loader, in the amount of seventy three thousand five hundred and ninety two dollars and eighty eight cents. This is a reissue of the purchase order originally issued in April of twenty twenty two in the amount of sixty eight thousand nine hundred and thirty nine dollars and thirty cents. An explanation of the change is the price included in the agenda packet.
So since we have the agenda packet and they don't, can you tell them why?
Yes. When I got the price from Bobcat in the spring, it was under the state bid contract when it typically in years past, the state bid contract is throughout that whole year. Well, because of inflation skyrocketing, Bobcat had to cancel that contract because they were losing money on these machines. So with that being said, they had to go back and renegotiate pricing with the state of Ohio, and that took a really, it's it's actually still going on. They haven't done it for the state bid, but we're going through a consortium, which is Sourcewell, which is basically a state bid thing. It's just probably where the state bid will come out as in the future, but it's, it's a way to get it done so we can get the machine on the way.
Because we need the machine.
Yes, very much so.
Y'all follow that?
I make the motion.
Seconded.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Detective Fuller.
I request a motion to authorize the carryover of up to eight hours of vacation time to twenty twenty three for myself.
Now, folks, settle in because this is going to be a long debate on this.
Eight whole hours.
I'll make the motion.
I seconded Debbie.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, other agenda items. Tim?
Yes, I'd like to request a motion for resolution twenty twenty two dash oh forty four, a resolution approving a legal services contract with Ms. Catherine Barbier for a three-year period commencing November first twenty twenty two and concluding October thirty first, twenty twenty five with renewal provisions. This is a contract that that I prepared and sent to Ms. Barbier, and she was agreeable to that. She had one small tweak in in the contract. I forgot that you can't really specialize in law in Ohio, so an area she concentrates in, but beyond that, what you have in your packet is what's being voted on tonight.
So that said, Katie is not here tonight. She is represented ably by her brother, except for one thing. You called her old earlier tonight, and I'm gonna tell her.
Older.
Older, okay. You said, and I quote, she's practiced a really long time. I think we've got a tape.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So moved.
I'll second. We're glad to have you.
Yeah, I'm excited. Roll call?
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
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 Mr. Williams?
Last one that I know of. I'd like to request a motion for resolution twenty twenty two dash zero five five, a resolution authorizing the township administrator to execute required grant agreement documents with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purchase of conservation property on Jenny Lynn Road. And that is required by W P C. We realize we do not have that, and so we need to get that through so we can get the the grant moving along.
Okay. Have a motion.
We've already motioned to purchase, right? I think we did that previously. Yes. Okay, so I make the motion.
Not not to purchase property to accept the grant.
Except, yes, except.
We'll still have to go through the purchase process.
Does that change your motion?
No, I.
Seconded.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
All right. Other business? Do we have other business?
We have a commissioner in the audience who's been sitting there very patiently listening to us go on. Would you like to talk? Would you like to come up?
Not not available. See what issues that. Obviously. Been around to all the. Kind of say it, but I don't know.
And you found that this is the most entertaining board of trustees in the entire county, didn't you?
It was good. You guys interfaced with your.
Entertaining does an equal good.
No, I know, I know. He's kind of sidestep that, but he's he's thoughtful in doing.
That's very, very commissioner like. Thank you. All right, any public comment, open floor discussion? Come on up, sir.
Another time, in case I was, make sure that we have those comments.
Three to five minutes is a long time. I can spew a lot of hot air in three to five minutes.
Uh, I did prepare my calls and I want to begin with somebody new. And thank you for having me on to speak here tonight. Uh, my name is Bill Wilson, and I'm very, very proud to be on the on the Rock Seattle every two thousand shows since two thousand and eighteen, a resident of the township since July twenty. Here tonight to talk about a letter specifically in trash or encyclical money that has been voted about this government. For those of us around you that have letters on it, it is loving the fall of these places. Setting on reassess value each of the five thousand three hundred and sixty five assholes in your dungeon for a service that is identical in every way for each one of us throughout this. If I could pause for a moment, there are a few things I want to share before I continue forward. I have the utmost respect for each and every word that I would appear today. Each of you, I believe, have a vested intention with respect to the money. You want to leverage the volume to obtain the lowest aggregate cost for the service. You'd like to provide residents with a sentence to resupply option to curb congestion on their roads. And within the township, achieving a semi-approved supplier and voting. You are a survey township and have been guided to a second source of distribution and pursuing an overwhelmingly positive response to key status quo. At all you produce and for your utilities. And I agree with almost everything that you're doing with this decision. I support the eradication of this brutal method of cheating on all price. I support the singles for supply to reduce burden of congestion. It's always nice to have mom and dad each other. For those of you that don't know this, if this levy passes, revenue will be charging the township one point one billion dollars roughly for the service, eleven million, roughly one point two million. And annual expenditures, according to Tim Williams, their county administrator is one point one eight seven million. Despite the third variable, still not a long. Dash. I remember you have that, but I hope all you will as well. The trustees probably conducted a survey, a positive feedback status quo. And they had another information associated for a price for a service and often put this on the line. Put this back on the ballot. So what is the issue? Probably all asked. I can start it really simple. Out of five thousand three hundred and sixty five households in the township, we all receive exactly the same service. The price that each resident will pay for this technical service varies by the level from a hundred dollars per household to six hundred or more per house. Why? Because the services being big and fantastic. A levy by definition, the charge is based on the size of your car. You all can one large car. A levy by definition, the charge is based on the size of your property. You all can one yard chart and one or second. You all are one people a week. But you will pay differently, just because you're a set home and property. Different from your neighbors. Some of you in this room, ironically, me included, will be paying substantially less. Than the median price of two hundred and ten dollars and twenty four cents per unit of the service. If you're one. Some of you will pay three, four, or even five times as much as they pay for your service. It's an identical service. In that area. You are getting identical services, your neighbors will be paying a lot of different price for that screen. So why did I stop to speak here tonight? So this is the levy that you're having today, acting in the benefits needs and there's a lot. I simply believe that there's better ways to deliver the service fairly and accurately to each period township relative to all or any saying of this trash. My cycle and service. I know it's too late to pull this in the balance. I also know that there is a lightened pool spot that has been reviewed thoroughly and confirming through what possible is the region manager. Running. That allows the township significant flexibility. Whether this levy passes or fails to amend this charter. My charge to you, the trustees of the township, is as follows. Whether this levy passes or fails, recognize the inequities of a trash and a recycler level. After election day results were in, sit down as a group and discuss what we all know to be the flawed system regarding this subject. For about a one dollar extra per month. Rumpkey. Or so it's similar to, we drew lots. As a reason to direct bill every single resident. For the service, the same amount. Not three or four times as much as maybe, but the same amount, the identical service we need to receive. I respect each of our board members and the multiple thankless role that each of you plays every day in service to this community. Right here before me this morning, sharing my thoughts. A little forward to your action after election day, it would require by, I believe, to be the perfect solution to the session. And I will take questions.
Fire when ready.
Well, so you would have been with three minutes if you would have sans the accolades for the board. You could have, yeah, yeah. So I I mean, I'm not going to personally argue with anything you said. It's all accurate information.
Yeah.
Uh, I I publicly called this levy essentially a socialist garbage levy because that's what it is. But the problem is from my perspective is that, and I'm not necessarily advocating for this either way, the voters are gonna have to come out and decide what they want. Um, but uh, you know, there are certain services that we deem. Kind of more important, um, so we don't live in a purely capitalist society, right? We have roads, we have schools, we have stuff. That as a society, we've all agreed, we're not gonna let a kid go uneducated. We're not gonna, you know, have somebody, you know, have to drive a road that they can't drive on, right? So we pitch into that. Some people pay more for the roads than other people. Some pay, people pay more for schools than other people. It's based on your home. Value. So as a group, we need to decide, is the garbage levy something that we want to take that approach on? The advantage to it is that everybody gets garbage service. So the possibility of having more garbage in the streets, more garbage out and about is less because everybody is getting provided this service regardless. It is gonna cost you more if your home value is more. It's essentially not fair in that regard. But in regard to a greater benefit for the whole, it does provide that value. I'm not necessarily advocating for that. We spend a lot of time in the township, Laura and the staff, taking phone calls from folks about Rumpkey. Because we're much more accessible than Rumpkey. So they can call in here and they can say, my garbage didn't get picked up. I don't, what what do I do with a large item pickup? They weren't upholding their agreement uh, the last term. Uh, in regards to large item pickups and brush and waste. And so a resident got ahold of me and they said, you know, they're saying they shouldn't pick up my waste. They're saying they're not gonna do a large item pickup. So I got with Laura and and Loretta at the time. We set up a meeting with the Rumpkey guy. He said, no, you're right. The contract does dictate that we're supposed to be doing large item pickup. They're supposed to be doing yard waste pickup. And they amended it. They made it right. We sat on a public service announcement to everybody essentially via mailer, saying, look, you are entitled to these services. Now, as an individual, if you call up Rumpkey and try to pressure them. For services that you're not getting provided, you're gonna get, be much more likely to be told to go jump in a lake, essentially.
That's exactly what.
So we have buying power as a township, so we can negotiate better service, better price, and ensure that as a, as a group. That that we have less, less chance of wasting about, you know, strewn about our township.
True.
So I I I'm not necessarily, I'm just, I'm not, I know it sounds like I'm advocating for that. I'm just, I'm providing a bit of a counter argument to what what my thought process has been on it.
And I don't do this counter argument at all, Mr. Allen, but I view it as. Inappropriate manner um, in terms of the way that this township is handling the garbage issue. I believe in aggregation. I said that in my statement. Uh, you can go to Rumpkey as the board of trustees and you can say direct buildings to. You can do that tomorrow. It's well within the contract language. And I think since I'm trying to relate to this, and again, it's so ironic because I'm benefiting from that. Um. But you can go to Rumpkey now that we're grateful. Why not do that? It's a simple, simple matter as well within the company. That's all I'm asking.
No, I I appreciate, I appreciate your comments for sure. I don't mean to sound like I'm being adversarial at all, because I I've I've made that socialist garbage levy comment publicly before, so I don't want to sound.
And and I don't like to be. Asked in a way.
Yeah, I know, I appreciate it.
Well, this particular basis. Other residents in this community that it will be quite to their benefit. So.
Well, you brought up some good points. I mean, for food for thought, certainly, it's a little too late to do anything about it for the impending levy. Uh, however, you know, your points are very well taken. We appreciate that you brought something up that I didn't think about. So uh, depending on the outcome of the levy, I think we'll look at this in a little bit more detail. Uh, but your points are very well taken and many of them are perfectly valid, quite frankly.
Yeah, thank you.
Where'd you go to high school?
Very close.
Good job.
So to be sure, the direct billing uh, version of this would provide all the same benefit. It's all still taxed. It's a part of your tax, your taxes. And it provides garbage service, or you get a bill every month from Rumpkey.
Right.
And so the latter, I would argue, you could not pay your bill. And what happens if you don't pay your bill? That's the only, that's the only part I'm 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 making an argument for. What happens then?
Yeah, we build in to the price of an additional dollar per month. For their loan service, they build in that into that order.
So they will continue to provide service.
Absolutely.
If you don't pay your garbage bill.
They cover it.
They did the exact same thing in the potential. They have to. I think it's some of them, I'm not much off.
Yeah.
But they have to go ahead and factor in that. And so according to Drew. For Rumpkey, he said that it would be approximately a dollar per month per resident. In order to even bill across the pension. Low impact that you guys are aggregating the population, the two hundred households.
A dollar per resident per month? Is that what you said?
Uh, it's one dollar per resident per month to your.
So that's only fifteen K a month, right? Um. We have. Per household.
Household five thousand, yeah.
Gentlemen, this this to. To whether this levy passes or fails. Re-negotiate with Rumpkey. They'll go ahead and take the aggregate price and then just direct bill residents. And recognize that the levy goes.
No, I under, I understand what you're advocating for. I'm just trying to understand my options as a trustee that's best beneficial.
Well, your option is, as a trustee is fairly. Simple. Right now, we've got a ballot initiative that's out.
The next time.
The next time. I think that's gonna be a really important discussion. We've got a couple of issues in my mind. When we look at the, at our budget, you know? These people pay taxes and we're gonna at some point need to do another fire levy. We're gonna definitely need to do another police levy. And so if we've got this. You call it socialist, I call it a luxury tax. Um. Socialist, he preferred, yeah. Um, then it's something that we need to have that discussion about and and alleviate that from the, from the taxpayers, but the, at the end of the day, they still need the service. There are other communities that I'd like to take a look at. Um, that do it in a similar fashion, very different from from Anderson and certainly different from us, like Batavia does it differently. Union Township does it differently. Um, and so I think we should take a look at those and see if whether or not they saw proliferation of garbage. You know, on the streets, you know, or if, or if it's still pretty much the same, do they see a lot of people, you know? Not paying their bills and and it becomes a problem. I think we need to take a look at that from apples and oranges, persp, apples to apples perspective, but also have some discussion with the community. And say, look, this is, this is the situation. You've got a a way that we can just direct bill you. You can, you know, have your own resources. You can deal with it yourself, you know? Or we can have this levy, and then we can also have the fire levy and the police levy and the school levy and the, you know, and all of the levies that go on at the county level. Um, and so that's just something I think that we have to have that discussion. I'm also concerned from from our own budgetary standpoint, because. You know, and Mr. Gisselson pointed this out. We're gonna be tight, even with a a mill increase on this, on this levy. We're gonna be tight getting through the next five years, and we certainly don't know what's gonna happen. We've already seen Rumpkey come back with a, a fuel surcharge. You know, so that eats into our, into the the amount of money. If we can't cover that, that uh, levy. For that five-year horizon, we're gonna be eating into the general fund to cover that cost because that's the agreement we made. So I I think Mr. Gisselson brings up. Most valuable points that I think moving forward, we need to sit down and have a real serious discussion with our residents um, to work through.
Well, thank you very much for your input. We really appreciate that. Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, we see the difficulties.
Uh, would you, would you like to come up?
Factor of the citizens that uh, be they. The county or the board or some other organization that uh, properizes uh. Including maybe clear and wide on other county or two.
Well, as far as I know, we, I mean, I know for a fact that the township receives no tipping fees. Uh, for the waste that goes from here out to um, Brown County. I mean, I don't, Commissioner, if you.
That's all part of solid basis.
Right, sure. So there's no, there's nothing that, again, and Mr. Gisselson pointed that out. This is a levy, it's pretty well contained inside the levy. None of it goes into our general fund for any part of what we do here. Um, and it's just an added, an added bonus for being a resident of Pierce Township. We have to question.
All right. Here in the area and unfortunately things, your work value organization. And uh, here's in years since two thousand thirteen. And uh, I remember on the bill that there were uh, maybe three or four surcharges on Rumpkey for fuel. And probably other things were all ended at all fuel, but uh. That was part of the uh, building of the individual's house.
Yeah. All right. All right. Any other public comment? Claudia.
You're not really public.
You are now.
She's a public hat and a township hat, right?
Um, I came here with some friends and um.
Step closer to the microphone, please, and please tell us your name and your address.
Girl, patients, people. Um, I came here with friends and my mom. Um, and unfortunately, Mr. President and Mr. Chairman want to appear tonight. Um, for us to um, respond to them, to them. But um. Just for the trustees to know, unfortunately, there is a group of us that are opposed to any sort of verbal coming really be on the topic.
Don't be shy, come on. No, not gonna do it.
What? Okay, um, do you have Donna?
Well, I'm not gonna be there.
Are you chicken? I dare you, double dog, dare you.
Donna, I went to school together after our first grade. I'm Donna, I know this forever. And our dad sold the property of what I call forty acres. Um. As a park and green space. And now I hear that maybe somebody wants to come in and build. And cringe upon the park. And I think when my dad sold it to the township. It was sending the impression that it would be used just solely as a park and green space.
My, my guess is what I think what what they proposed is they proposed uh, purchasing a segment of that land. Um, in an exchange, doing some other things in terms of buffers and whatnot. Um, they weren't here to discuss their proposal again, but they were here last time, or the engineer was here, I should say. But I I don't think there's much of a inclination, I speak for myself. Uh, I'm not currently inclined to approve, you know, their proposal. Um, the other two trustees will have to speak for themselves, but. To me, it looks like a non-starter, at least at this point.
Well, I think it's also something, I mean, Doug, you've got a very quizzical look on your face. Um, I think.
Yeah, I was here last month.
Yeah. This is something that's come before the board twice before, and I think, you know, I think it's twice. And we voted it down twice. Um, the the idea is gentleman wants to buy an acre and a half of land, which is a strip. Um, that would be on the nature preserve on Locust Corner. Um, so that would be an access road that would go back to, I can't remember how many acres are back behind the nature preserve. But they would turn that into a subdivision, but they need two access points. One would be down, I think, on seven forty nine. And this would be the secondary uh, access point. It's in kind of an awkward bend, as you know, from where the nature preserve is located. It's in an awkward bend to begin with, so it's. You know, and I, and again, I I think. The the issue I've had with it time and time again is that when we turn something into a park, I think there needs to be a very serious reason. Why we would um, sell that parcel or portion of that parcel to turn it into something else. And I'm not sure this rises to that level.
Yeah, I agree. I don't, I don't wanna start setting a precedent and selling parkland. I don't think that's a good precedent, so. And any, anything.
I worry some things. Yeah, I mean, those were, yeah, I'm excited.
I'm involved in right on that corner and we growing up, we had farms, you know, took yard, recycle. What kind of state, people was dating somebody and then around the, there are factors long that that are being done and.
I'm, I'm still concerned about taking these projects. And.
It's beautiful back there. I have a tunnel walk, I walk dog back there all the time and it's still beautiful. And for that to be destroyed, we.
Oh, all right.
Grab myself a three, it'll be a free header and.
We'll see if that opportunity arises. I would like to see it if it does. Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I have. But I mean, there's some problems with putting up or changing the mailbox is is each uh, we. We were not allowed to read. I was very far off the road against the mailbox. And it was the reason why I stayed in the subject that I was like. My, I'm new. That one under that invisible come in. I mean, it's, I'm bending, it means that we're. And it's. I wrote, those are all the things that changed.
If you have a need, if you have a medical need, like a handicap, and are not, don't feel like you can cross the road to your mailbox on the opposite side, you can request a medical exemption to that effect. I don't know if the post office would grant it, but we've had that come up in the office a few times and they've granted it. But you have to have like a handicap where you can't walk and that type of thing, so.
So basically, what's happening here is that you had the courage to come up and talk. You then were able to talk. Now you all want to talk. Is that right? Do I have that right?
Well, I think we're following agreement, probably. And they didn't show up.
We would have voted on it tonight had they shown.
So. Well, we.
Yes, and you may need to come back. They may ask to speak before this board again. But again, I mean, Hartman was here last month.
Yeah, I think you get an idea, a sense of the board's, you know, general, you know, lean on this subject. So thank you for all your feedback. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
So before we go on to the next topic, you mentioned something about walking your mom's dog, which made me think of something. Commissioner Painter may be able to confirm this. I'm not sure, but I think that the new Dog County Dog Warden is, is, or is in the process of being appointed, and he's a resident, has been appointed? Okay. Tim Pappas, so he's a resident of the township. I just found out about that a few weeks back. So I think you all should be proud to know we've got a good man in that position. Glad to hear that he's.
Now, Peter.
He's tough and compassionate.
Pete, are you saying that he's a good man because he lives in Pierce or because he's a fellow Greek?
Well, it could be a little bit of both. Plus, he's a good police officer for many years. So he's tough, but compassionate. So we're, I'm really proud to have him in that capacity as a taxpayer of Claremont County. Yeah.
All right. Well, it's lightning enough. I can hear it a little bit.
Now we can leave.
I didn't think I could get rained out inside. Any other public comments? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
You'll notice that he gave me extra time while it was raining, then he rained me back in. Time to go.
Yes, yes. Thanks, guys.